Hi, Rebecca Powers, I'm here.
District three?
All in check.
District four?
Present.
Kent Jones, district five, Pam Rocker. Okay, we'll come out and re- check the motion to come out and re- check.
Second.
Second. The motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried, okay. Uh, the first, uh, order of business is the, uh, opening of the beaches. We have a motion to reopen the beaches.
My ocean, my ocean.
You want?
Second.
Discussion.
As long as there, as long as there are three, uh, not more than ten people in a, uh, that gather together. Correct?
I got discussion on that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we have a motion and we, I, I heard a second, I'm gonna leave that up to the minutes clerk. Wait a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Wait, wait, wait.
Request for discussion.
We need discussion.
Oh, discussion.
Yeah.
One at a time.
Jerry said he could, Jerry can easily just pull those, uh, he can just close, stick her over there and just keep their signs up, so.
Can, can I?
Yes ma'am.
Can I make a suggestion? You have a, an order already entered that closes the beach. It's set as to groups of ten or less who practice social distancing courts with the CDC, so you really have an order that closes the beaches except to ten or less, already only, already adopted. The, the governor entered an order closing the beaches totally, which he's now lifted, if I understand. So, all you really gotta do is you, is reaffirm your order that you adopted on, uh,
Get the date.
Twenty-third, I'm sorry, wait a minute.
No, it was April.
It was in April?
I think March twentieth is when you opened. No, wrong one, sorry.
No, we opened it back up.
Hold on a second.
To reinstate that order.
Well, that order actually remains in effect, it just got trumped, no pun intended, by the, by the, uh,
Governor.
Governor's order. Now, he's lifted his order, the board's order remains in effect. Which is what, that's a, I think that's what the board probably should do, rather than redo it. And extend it through whatever dates you wanna extend it through. Okay, aye.
Okay, wait, so per our attorney, we need to reopen, reopen the beaches according to the order that we placed in such and such a date. I don't know what date it is, I didn't hear it, something like that.
Okay, can y'all hear me, Mary Tucker? Hello?
No.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I couldn't, I couldn't hear. In reference to this initially, when I first heard it, but I was in favor of it, now I'm not. It's just my opinion, I know you guys are in favor of it. I just think if we're gonna open the beach, we should open it, or if we're gonna close it, we should close it. I don't agree with the ten people in the order thing. I'm more inclined to go along with the, uh, with the May first perhaps. I think we should get a lot of kids out, spring break to come back. It's gonna be difficult to enforce this ten or less rule. So, at this particular time, I'm just not in favor of opening the beach back up.
Okay, sorry again.
Is that to be reflected?
I can reiterate my motion, Ms. Rocker.
Yes ma'am.
Motion to reconfirm the board's order stated at the April twenty-third, I think, or whatever day it was, meaning to close the beach except for groups of ten or more, so we're just gonna reconfirm that, correct?
Yes ma'am.
Or extend it to whatever.
That's the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, when will, when will the beach be opened, Monday or today?
Monday.
How about tomorrow?
He didn't, it is.
I, I haven't seen the governor's order, so you have to follow it. If he says Monday, then it's still closed until Monday.
The governor's order says Monday, is what my understanding, or that's what he said in his, uh, talk today.
I tried to find the word.
I was trying to send that order to y'all, but my phone has just made, made it right now, right?
Connie, Connie. Yes sir. Let's, I'm having, I'm having a hard time hearing, uh, Tim and Pam when they speak.
Okay.
I don't know if they can get, get a little closer, and especially if somebody speaks over them, so it's hard on the telephone.
Right.
If you would, try to, let somebody say this before somebody else says anything, because I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time once somebody speaks over someone, understanding what they're saying.
Okay.
Okay, would you like Tim to repeat what he had said?
I think I heard Tim say, simply the order, the previous order, whatever date it was that the board issued, is now in effect, which is the ten, uh, not more than, uh, ten gathering at, uh, any one location.
That's correct. That's correct, but it's March twenty-third order.
On the twenty-third, or, so we're simply, uh, since the governor is withdrawing, uh, the closing of the beaches, that order is now back into effect.
Not until Monday. The governor's is not effective until Monday, the twenty.
I did, we opened the beaches, uh, back in, with our previous order on Monday.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then if I may make a suggestion, make sure that Tim does not pull the signs off until Monday morning.
That's correct, good, that's right.
We will enforce, we will enforce the action this weekend and Monday morning, it will be open. Done, correct?
Ms. Rocker, that's excellent. Yeah, and I'll let him know where, where Pam and Tim.
Yeah, we have our board, we have our department head conference call at two today, so I'll let him know if it, uh, if I don't hear from him within an hour.
Okay, we have an order to reopen the beaches according to, uh, the former order that we had placed in October on the twenty-third meeting, and, um, that was made by Ms. Martin and seconded by Ms. Powers, Supervisor Powers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
No.
Yeah, he's a, uh,
Okay, okay.
It was, it was March twenty-third, not October.
I'm sorry, March twenty-third. I can't, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing too.
It's okay, it's March twenty-third, I won't take it.
Wait, here's a volume, let me see, does that help, does that help some? Um, okay, the next order of business is, uh, going to be a, uh, talking about the burn ban requested by Pat Sullivan, our fire chief.
Pat, are you on the line?
Yes ma'am, I am on the line, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Pat, would you like to go into a short, a short dissertation about, uh, your reasoning, the record?
Yes ma'am, I'd, yes ma'am, but, uh, we, we've had numerous brush fires, uh, wood fires, uh, field fires. Primarily, this is due to everybody being home, of course. The weather has been, been nice, um, not, not, not bad, so that they can get out and do things around the house. And we're having a lot of burning, the burning is getting out of control, and allowing, uh, the, our resources go, um, put the fires out, contain the fires, that's several fires that broke structures. Uh, the primary problem is that we've had a couple fires that we couldn't get to, and they produce so much smoke that it inundated the neighborhoods, caused, uh, the house to fill with smoke. And we're getting, getting a lot of complaints on that, number one. Number two, the city fire chief are, are seeing the same thing. They're asking that the county, um, do something to help them with that issue also. So, right now, we know that we're in a deficit with the rainfall, so I checked with the, uh, with the office, with the EMA office, and Matt tells me that we are in moderate drought conditions. We have not had, um, rain for a while, and we've probably been eight, at least eight inches of low rain in a deficit. Um, so the request is to, number one, discuss it, and if you're in favor of it, to do a two-week burn ban, um, just to get a, a, just ask, maybe try to get through this, and with the COVID thing, um, it's also in the, we're having to gather, and we have these, and the COVID nineteen plays into it from that point. So, um, one of the things that I put in the, the deal also looking at is, the EMA office is saying we might get some weather this weekend. Unfortunately, we've seen this before, and it's all gone north of us, which they have a, you know, tragedy north of us. Luckily, we didn't get that, we just need some rain, we don't need any storms, we just need rain. So, my suggestion was, if we could, we'd ask people not to burn this weekend, but hold off, or give us a couple of days, let's see if we get some rain, and if we don't get any rain, then we come back and say, yes, we are certainly gonna need to put in a burn ban for, a burn ban for two weeks. So, that's my proposal to you and the board, questions?
Let, let me make the suggestions, tell the board whatever that I may, and I know that in the past, we had a policy from the board that authorized the fire chief to issue a burn, uh, burn ban, I don't know if we could do that now, but my suggestion would be in anticipation of the weather this weekend, that if it doesn't, if, if we do not get the necessary rain, that we authorize Pat to issue the burn ban, uh, Monday. Uh, if we get enough rain, then I don't think we need to issue the ban, how does that affect?
Yes sir, I, I'm in total agreement with that, we don't wanna put the burn ban because we know what that entails, I do not.
You don't wanna put, you don't, you don't wanna put a burn, burn ban in for two days, and you have, you have stormy weather, and it's beyond necessary, next week you have to lift.
Absolutely, that's exactly right.
So, Marlon? Sorry?
Entertaining the motion at this time?
Yes sir.
Uh, my motion would be to authorize the, uh, fire chief Monday in his discretion after, uh, you know, reviewing the weather this weekend, if we do not get enough rain, then to authorize the fire chief to issue a burn ban for the two weeks, or whatever he feels would be needed. And his suggestion is that we suggest that our citizens to, there's a problem, and maybe be very careful, whatever the terminology needs to be, and rest to burn fires this weekend.
And we have one motion, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll take it out.
Our motion is second by Ms. Powers, all those in favor, uh, we need further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. The next, uh, order of business is, uh, employees and whether or not to return them, and I think Pam has a suggestion. Pam?
Um, if, I know there are some staff members that, um, are ready to come back to work and to do some, some, uh, needed things, since it's been a month since they've, uh, worked in their departments, and, um, I was thinking, if, if we're gonna do the administrative leave for another week, uh, y'all are considering that, that if, at least if, uh, some of them, they want to, maybe we could split it up twenty-twenty or something, maybe they could work twenty hours a week and work, and do admin twenty, but that's up for y'all, but that was just a suggestion, 'cause we do have some that are wanting to come back to work, so.
This is Beverly, can I call?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I'd say let's just get everybody back to work, and those who feel compromised or don't wanna come, then let them use their own personal or sick leave, because otherwise, we're gonna be right back in the same boat, with some of them working, some of them not, so let's just tell everybody to go back to work, and those that don't feel comfortable can use their own personal leave.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
And I've talked to a lot of the employees, I'm sorry, Kent, what are you talking, I couldn't hear you.
No, no, I was just, and I agree with you, I think we should bring them all back. I think we've been out for three weeks, and we know that, it's been four weeks, we know the, the safe practices, so I think we should be able to bring them all back and, uh, just continue using the safe practices.
Yeah, each department head on the conference call daily, we stress, um, the six-foot distancing, and, and I think they can all work with that as far as, um, you know, with their staff, and making sure they have, we already distributed the face masks, on the way to the face masks, and all. So, uh, so that, you know, that's, that's, that's a good thing, so.
Yeah, I worry that Pam, I worry Pam could tell you, and Kent too, on these conferences, I, I have not heard one of these guys say they, every one of them wants to come back, Chuck lost his baby.
Well, um, and also, yeah, because, um, they, you know, they all have a lot to do, so they, they wanna get back to get to work and do what they need to do, so.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Yes sir. This, this last?
I, I didn't hear all of the governor's, uh, conversation, uh, uh, views report, uh, what was his rationale for extending it another week? The, this, uh, shelter at home, uh, policy, what was his rationale? Did he feel like the cases were still to have? Does anybody know?
Marlon, I think, just talking with them, that I, I think they wanna encourage people to stay home and not get out, you know, unnecessarily, but to try to start some semblance of na, of normalcy again. And I, I think the sheltering at home was like, well, just, you know, still try to, try to keep you distant and be safe, but, um, and that's just my, uh, personal opinion and interpretation, but, um, I think, yes, yes ma'am?
We encouraged the opening.
I read it, I, I glanced over it, and, um, I interpreted the same way, that he was clear in saying, he was opening, um, boutiques and dress shops, and hair salon, not to do here, but to sell products, I mean, so I think his shelter place did not include, um, going back and forth to work, I didn't read that at all in there. It was just.
And, and it's. If I may, the, the, um, the, the cities have not closed down at all, they're still working, but most of the cities still have employees, and they never had, uh, administrative leave.
Well, I, do you, are you ready for a motion? Because I can make a motion that would just get everybody back to work, and those who are not comfortable can use their personal leave.
Do we have a motion, and do we get a second?
Second.
Kent, Kent? And, um, is there, is there further discussion? Marlon?
No, I'm fine, that, that's, I, I just wanted to know the rationale, uh, if, if there's some limited opening in, in his, in his order, there's some limiting openings, but like you described, something about being able to sell certain items that were originally, or opening certain businesses that were originally closed, and I have no problem with us coming back to work, I just wanted to make sure that there was, uh, what exactly is on a, energy?
Okay.
I'll, I'll shoot it up to you, Marlon, I've got a little summary of it.
Okay.
That's Connie, that's, that's.
I've got the.
Okay.
I have the whole thing, but it was texted me, and my phones were acting up so bad, I mean, I was trying to get, it's all ready to go, it's just not going, so I'll, as soon as I can, that's why I'm here at the district, um, the Outterville Work Center. I couldn't get y'all on my.
The fact that you're opening up the beaches, because, but, but, at the end of the case, I, I think a gradual, uh, opening up, uh, again, so I don't have any problem with them going back to work.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll do, uh, we'll make sure, like, if they have temperature, if they have a temperature that day, they have to stay out seventy-two hours before they can come out, so we'll monitor it, we've been, um,
Pam?
Yes sir.
Do, do we have the ability to, to take their temperatures?
We do.
When they want to learn each one?
We don't have, we have ordered thermometers, and they've been on back orders, so we've been trying to get those, but they're gonna, we're gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be there at this time, we may have them in next week, but at this time, it's gonna be up to them to take their temperature and let us know if they have a temperature or not, before they report to work, uh.
And we need to emphasize, we're, we're concerned about them, but we're also concerned about if the economy had, or something here, they exposed the others.
That's right, and if they've been exposed, if they've been exposed or have any reason to think that, you know, if they've been around somebody that has had a temperature, you know, they need to wait before they come back to work.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Can I say one more thing to the board? I've now read the governor's order, it is not effective Monday morning at eight AM, it is effective immediately.
Wow.
He amended his, he amended his order, and it, that is previously entered and changed, and opened the beaches, and it's, it ends on eight AM on April twenty-seventh, a week from Monday.
But it's in effect today.
So, the order's been immediately amended as I read it, and I'm reading it on my iPhone, but.
Did you finally get that, did any of y'all get that order I sent?
I got it through a link, I can send it to everybody.
I'm telling you.
I got it, let's stick to my work now.
Eight AM, Monday the twenty-seventh.
That's when it ends.
Monday the twenty-seventh is a holiday, too.
That's when his order ends.
Or you said Monday the twenty-seventh is the end of the, uh, uh, shelter and home order, Jim?
Yeah, he extended it until eight AM, April twenty-seventh, with, with the amendments that he put in there, which includes opening the beach to, as long as you exercise.
Opening the beaches immediately?
Yeah, that's the way I read it, that he amended his order that was in effect immediately and changed the things, he changed, one of which is opening the beaches as long as you exercise ten or less people and social distancing.
Okay.
And, and then he, so that, that order now stands amended immediately, the one that was previously entered, and it's been extended until April the twenty-seventh at eight AM, and it could get extended again, but that's what his order says.
So, will you do, I already don't plan about, I have to do it on Monday, correct?
Well, you're, you're being conflict.
This is a boy again, but it's up to y'all.
Actually, you won't be in conflict, your order's been entered, he entered an order that closed the beaches completely, he's now lifted that order, so there's two orders in place right now, yours, the board supervisors, which basically is ten people or less in social distancing, and his order has now been entered, which opens the beaches to the same thing, basically.
So, we can remove the closed si, portion of the sign today?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if the board wants to close the beaches, it has that authority, because his order says the board has the authority to be more restrictive than it wants to be. Than, than his order, so it's up to the board as whether or not the beaches are open between now and Monday. Right now, your order is just ten or less.
What do the board think?
We got a motion and a second right now on the all employees returning, and we haven't voted on that, and we can go back to the sand beach, please.
Okay, let's go back, um, we have a motion and a second for all, all employees to return to work on Monday, and that, all those in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? All opposed, motion carried. Okay, now we wanna move to, do we want to revisit whether we open the beaches this weekend or Monday?
I might, I might say this before we discuss it, that the weather, uh, materialized, like the other people said, I don't think it's gonna make much difference, it's July, but we cannot, I'm just, so, and, uh, we have to see, whatever it is.
Connie, can I make? I'm sorry, uh, Chair?
Yes, can I make one suggestion?
Yes sir.
Riding the beaches right now, I think, uh, because there's been no maintenance, there's debris everywhere, so if, if Chuck and them cleaned it this weekend, or they, or they, you know, drug it up, or however they do it, then it would be sufficient to open Monday, um, but I'm, that's just a suggestion, I'm just going out.
Okay, that sounds good, what about the rest of the board, how does that feel?
I, I don't know, I don't understand Monday.
I agree, I think that's.
One, one at a time, please, uh, Rebecca?
I, I agree exactly with what Sheriff said, and with Marlon, and saying it gives the beach guys a few days, it gives people something to look forward to, and it might be raining anyway.
That's correct.
Beverly?
I can't claim.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here with that, and we can say they'll reopen Monday based on the weather situation too, because I, I agree with Sheriff, it's, I don't, I don't think it's any hurry. And Chuck and them can just start Monday morning and kill those little stickers off, because everything's done.
Uh, what about the cleaning, are we gonna have some, uh, folks out there cleaning, if the weather permits?
I would, yeah, because I'm like, I saw some trash, garbage cans, emptying, stuff like that, so I would. If they're willing to work this weekend, I'd put them out there.
Yeah, it, it has to be weather permitted, um, 'cause if it's raining and it's storm, they can't work.
I think the weather report is Sunday.
The weather permitted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, wait a minute.
Everything stands.
You're gonna need a mo, you're gonna need a, a new motion to close the beach.
We already did one.
No, you don't.
We did it, we did it. We did the motion, and it's taken back on Monday.
Oh, yeah? Was that the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so you made the motion, all right.
The first motion that stands, and it stands, uh, we need not change anything, we're gonna open the beaches on Monday, and we're gonna ask them to clean it, if, if the weather permits this weekend.
Look, I'm sorry, but what you, what you've got right now is two orders, you got the governor's order, and you got the board's order that says the beaches are closed to less than ten, I mean, closed to anybody over ten. It's open to ten or less, that's the two orders that are now in place, and you continued that order a, a moment ago, we have, we do not have an order that closes the beaches completely till Monday, to, to my understanding. So, if you wanna close them completely to Monday to allow them to be clean, then we need, we need a motion, an order closing the beaches totally until.
I, I disagree, I don't think, look, we're gonna get tried if we do that. I think we're making a mountain out of a log here, it's, let's just continue like what we're doing, and let Chuck and him go out there and start cleaning, and, and redo it.
But, but for the rec, for the record, in, in Tim's defense, for the record, if he wanted to amend the motions made on the twenty-third, we can amend it to open on Monday, is that, was that correct, it's him?
No, a, actually, the two orders are entered, and both of those orders, both the governor's order and the board's order now closes the beaches to everyone except for groups less than ten, that's what's in place right now, and if that's okay, that's fine, but somebody started talking about closing it so we could clean them until Monday. Those two orders span right now, if you want to amend it, or, or enter an order closing the beaches completely until the sand beach can get them clean, then you need a new order.
No, I can. Close to Monday anyway, Tim, but they're closed to Monday anyway, and we, except to the beach people, except to the, um, except our employees.
I see what you're saying is that.
Anybody bear, bear, it, it's, let, let me see, and I think what Tim is saying, Tim is saying that once the governor order was withdrawn, which is, I assume today sometime, then our, our order is, is still applicable, which is only to ten, not more than ten people at center would become effective today, so what Tim is saying is that for us to close the beach until Monday, we need to have an order saying that the beach will be closed until Monday, and at that time, we'll open the beach based on the ten or not more in social distancing, am I, do I have that right, Tim?
That, that's correct, Marlon.
Once the governor was, once the governor withdrew, once the governor says his order of closing the beaches is, is ended, then, uh, what's standing, what's standing now is that our beaches are gonna be open. So, if we want them closed until Monday, we're gonna have to say. But they're closed until Monday.
Well, this time, now.
Well, I'm liking Paul. Okay, I'll reach out there. On the first page of the executive order number one four seven three, the last paragraph on the first page says, where I have on April first, in order to minimize the risk of possible bird transmission and related, of COVID nineteen and related measures, I issued executive order number fourteen sixty-two, end of duty and stay by shelter in place, effective at five PM on Friday, April thirtieth, and remaining at full force in effect until eight AM on Monday, April twentieth, unless rescinded, modified, or extended. I think that says it all, I, I don't, I don't see Tim unless I'm missing something.
Go, go down.
He's already got it in his order at eight AM on Monday.
No.
Okay, hold on now, Tim?
Hold on a second, 'cause what he's saying in that paragraph barely is, is the original order extended until eight AM, Monday, the April twentieth, unless modified, then he goes down, when he gets down to the bottom. Monday, the April twentieth, unless modified, then he goes down, when he gets down to the bottom, he modified it. He, he says the beaches are actually still closed by him, except the groups of ten or less, which is the same as the, as the board's order at the current time. So, I mean, the only question, if y'all want to leave it like that, it may be just fine, it, it's just not gonna be closed to ten or less. If you want it closed between now and Monday, I think you're gonna have to adopt a new order. That closes.
Yeah, because there's enough, I'm, I'm reading this order now, I guess I just read it in.
Hey, for clarity's sake, let's just say, we'd like to enter an order to clo, close the beach for cleaning, Mon, Friday until Monday.
Why?
Because we have to clean the beach, and that's what, that's what the sheriff suggested and the board voted on.
No.
I know, but Connie, I don't see why, I bet you're gonna create some bad V R, to be honest with you.
I'm already getting text messages from people on this stuff.
That one.
The thing that it's, that they're kind of agreeing with what I'm saying with, uh, that it already states, I feel Monday, so, I would just let it go, and I'm, I don't think that we're gonna have to issue it, Chuck and them can get out there and start cleaning.
But we have to follow what the, uh, law says to do, I know it sounds confusing, but we might need either to enter a simple order that just says beaches, you know.
It's not that confusing.
You might want to think about that, I, what do you, what, what do you think, what's the rest of the board think?
I don't think it, I just, I don't think it's that confusing, either we can, we can vote to extend the governor's stay to Monday or leave it as is, pretty much what, what the discussion has been.
Can y'all hear Ken?
We just have to, have to extend the governor's stay to Monday instead of today. Otherwise, otherwise it's gonna go into effect of us having ten or less, it's going back to our original order.
Well, I'd leave it like that, and there's Chuck and them to go out there and start cleaning it, be done with it, that's just mine.
Yeah, that may be, that may be.
We won't need to enter an order then.
That's right. No, we don't, because if we enter an order saying the beaches closed, that's, that's what's gonna create that, that happen. Because then we're gonna have it out there, we don't, we don't personally, if the board has closed the beach, I just think leave it as is, and just go to Monday, and the guys can go out there and start cleaning whatever they see fit. I just don't think we need to enter.
We will abide by the governor's order, and we will, uh, uh, we will not enter an order, we'll, after reject our order, we'll reopen on Monday.
You, you don't have to do anything, you've already done what you need to do, unless you want to close the beach tomorrow.
We don't want to make that order out there, I don't think.
I'm with, with Ken, I'm pretty glad you're sleeping on it. I'm telling you, just like, oh my God, really, I'm, 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 there's gonna be, there's, there's something, I agree with you, that there's gonna be a lot of confusion, and I understand what Karen's saying, but there's gonna be a lot of confusion, if, if the media gets it that we closed the beach, um, for just this weekend, and then it's gonna open it Monday, I, 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 I don't know, there's a lot of confusion, that's. I agree, Marlon, and they're on this call, we, hey, y'all don't realize it, but the media's on the call. Yes, so, unvered, like, like we originally had it, keep the confusion down, send Chuck and them out there, take the little stickers off, and clean it, and be done with it, leave it like it is, that's my, I'm moving that we keep the original motion up here.
Have a motion, second?
You don't have to.
You don't have, you don't have. Okay, all right. All right, are there any other, uh, business for the board?
The only thing, just, just so I can make it clear, I've got the governor's order in it, it actually is modified immediately. He, he continued fourteen sixty-three, uh, until eight AM on Monday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, except as follows, so it's immediately modified by this order. And I just want y'all to be clear on that, when you read it, you'll see that in the first paragraph after now, therefore.
I know, but I think that's what we, that, that's what we're saying, Tim, we're just gonna let our order stand.
Right, right.
You know, it's a channel more, but if you're left, it's left, it's gone now.
Which is, which is the same as his order, basically, so it's fine. Anyway, I'll just let you know, it is, it is effective.
But if people want to go to the beach, even though there's gonna be heavy equipment and trash out there, cause we're gonna be cleaning. Okay.
We need it. One last thing we need.
All right.
One last thing, Connie.
For the business.
One last thing, Connie.
Yeah.
One last thing, spread on the minutes the governor's executive order just entered, if you would.
Yeah, let me have that on there. Beverly?
Yeah, I'll put more, a little more information, and I know this is not on the agenda, but do we have any idea how many ICU beds are available in Harrison County, and how many ventilators that we have here? I've been asked that, and I cannot get an answer out of, I don't know if nobody knows, or they just not say it, but if they're waiting to find that out.
I'll call and see what I can find out for you.
We'll have to contact all the hospitals.
I would appreciate it, because that key to, you know, that was New York's problem, that they only had, like, one bed for every hundred thousand people, so I'm just curious what are the beds that people wish to have, and ventilators to let show.
Yeah, and I, I, I'd also like, how many, um, I'd also like to know how many, um, if we, if we've sheltered any, or taken care of any people from Louisiana, I'm asking, you know, cause we have extra beds, I just wondered that. Okay, so, um, we have a motion to spread on the minutes, the, um, the governor's order, please?
Motion.
A motion, second?
Second.
Discussion? All voters in favor of this, I'll say aye.
Aye.
All ahs, motion carries. Okay, I'll, I'll try to find out that, and if anyone else wants to, you can get into it, too, please do, as far as the ICU beds and the, um, the ventilators. You're welcome, are there, is there any other business of the board?
You're gonna recess, right?
And I, may I clarify one thing, gee, for the press that comes in?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, they were, I had one of them ask me a while ago about, so that, so the ten will apply to the sand beach workers, but we don't have ten sand beach workers out there, do we? They're definitely not all together.
They're not working all together, no.
No, the equipment allows them to be almost isolated.
It's one part of the machine, which is spread out, so, okay, I just want to clarify that.
Yes. Okay, are there any other questions, any other?
Connie, I got, Connie, I got one question, let me just make sure, that I know that there was two decisions made, Ken have one, and, and I think Beverly had the other one, so we open it up, the beach Monday to ten or less people, that's what, that's what the vote was.
Oh, it's incorrect.
We didn't vote on it.
No, that's not.
Yeah, there, you voted on it.
No, that's not correct, he says eight AM Monday. The board's order and the governor's order, in my opinion, I can read the governor's order as effective immediately today. Not Monday at eight AM.
That's correct, that, that was what we voted.
Okay, I know, but.
Open, follow the governor's order, it'll be open today, and if some people want to go out on the beaches weekend, with the heavy equipment and trash and rain, then that's on there.
But, and for ten or less, it's, is our, was our order, if I am not mistaken.
That's correct.
Listen, y'all, uh, Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Listen, listen, what y'all got, what we got, and Tim, you correct me, that, when this conversation initially came up, and references to the governor's order, and closing the beach, and us, we have an order, you speak through your message, you have an order on the record, that the beach is, is going to be open on Monday. That's what the, I think that's what the motion was, and that's what we voted on, so if you look at the order of the board, Tim, you correct, if I'm wrong, if you look at the order, the order supervisors, we're saying that the beach will be open on Monday.
No, that's not quite correct, no.
Can I say what it is, you have, you have an order of the board supervisors that closed the beach, except to ten or less, and practicing social distancing, that's the standing order of the board. The board voted earlier to allow that order to stand as is, so under the board's order, the beach is closed, it's set to ten or more, and that's immediately. The only thing that kept that order from being in effect is the governor's order, which had closed the beaches completely. That order has now been modified as of today, to allow the beaches to open to ten or less, which is the same of your order, in my opinion, reading the order, that is, that is effect, he modified his previous order that closed the beach as effective today, is the way I read it. So, I mean, I'm reading it on my iPhone, once you know how that is.
So with that being said, and that means the board's original order kicks in, and that means the beach's open as of now, for ten or less.
Correct. But to wait, let me wait, I'll go with that.
That's not what we originally voted on, because Sheriff, the Sheriff said, uh, give us time to clean the beach up, he was concerned about the debris and all of that, and we took an action, and just, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we voted on not opening the beach until Monday, you know, I know.
Marlon, if I may, I, I believe we did, we had much discussion over that, and decided that it would be less confusing to the public if we went along with the gov, would let our, um, our original order stand, along with the governor, which would be to open the beaches to ten or less, um, and practically, and it would be effective today, that was, the, the timing was the discussion, it was whether it was today or whether it was Monday, and I think the board, um, if I'm, if I read it right, that we, um, we decided to wait, I mean, just follow the, the, the most simple way to do it, which was, um, to let it stand as it is now.
That's the way I would count it.
That's the way, that's the way I understand it.
Okay, I, 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 I'm sorry, maybe I'm not understanding it, but, so the beaches are open today, as of right now, the beaches are, are open to ten or less people.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's it, that's in accordance with the governor and with our previous order.
That's correct.
Of March.
Right.
I think, same as March.
Yeah, that was, how was the motion, was to confirm the order that was taken on March twenty-third, as you acted against it after October, but March.
Yeah, I said October twenty-third, so there.
Correct, yeah, okay.
Is everyone in a cor, now, does everyone understand, is it clear?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Marlon?
I, I, I understand, yeah, it's clear, yeah.
I'm sorry, this telephone is a little bit, just teleconference and stuff that I'm gonna have to get used to, and I think we all are gonna have to get used to. So, is there any further business of the board?
I, I just have, um, I just have a comment, I wanted to remind y'all that we have that list for the testing sites. I need to have, um, your okay on your site and your date, so that we, and we all can get started scheduling those for next week. So if you'll just make sure, check that email, I know I got Mr. Ladner's, um, okay, um, so far, I'm not sure if I got anybody else's, so.
I got mine.
Okay, you got yours as good, okay?
Okay, Pam, I'm sorry, I've been trying to organize this thing this morning, so I'll look at my email and let you know as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any email, last one? We need a motion to continue, uh, continue to recess.
Yes, motion to recess.
All right, motion, second? Second?
Beverly, Beverly seconded.
Okay, all voters in favor of this, I'll say aye.
Aye.
All ahs? Thank you very much.